Right, call a meeting to order. Excuse me. And we're going to take the agenda out of order for obvious reasons. The first order of business is the approval of minutes from April 25th, which were emailed to us. I assume nothing.
I will make a motion to waive the reading and approve.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
The second order of business is case number 2023-11 at 125 Ash Street. Stella Lewis appears to be the petitioner.
Good evening, everybody. David Mindlin, representing the petitioner, who is Stella Lewis, but Ms. Lewis is infirm, and her daughter Elaine Chetopoulos is here under a power of attorney. So this is a rather interesting situation, as I tell all my clients, you never want to hear me say the word "interesting" about your case. The house is a three-family located at 125 Ash Street. The house is on one lot, and there are two additional lots to the side of it, or the rear. Those lots have always been used for kind of casual parking. The problem in recent years is that there's such a bad rat infestation that they were digging their way under the fence, infesting the yard, and making it virtually unusable. And those lots are, I believe, 1,450 square feet each?
Yeah, 1,004.
Yeah. So what Ms. Chetopoulos did was paved, I mean, it's described by the city as extending the driveway, but she actually paved the portions of the lot along the fence where the rats were coming in. So it resulted in a pretty much fully paved side yard. And what she would like to do at this point is use it for parking. There's enough room for six cars with a slightly reduced parking size. I believe the spaces are eight and a half feet each, and the aisle is slightly smaller than the 24 feet required. We believe it's a good compromise. It's providing six spaces, which is what's required for the three-family building. It's taking cars off the street. It's also making the lot safe for people to utilize it at this point. And that's where we are. So we're asking for special permit and variance to create the six parking spaces.
When was it paved?
About four months ago, maybe, or?
No, it was last year.
Was it that long ago?
Yeah, because I had to wait for the survey that I gave you.
Right, the original plot plan.
And now you get that till, like, February.
Yeah, what happened is, unfortunately, Ms. Chetopoulos didn't know that she required a permit to do that work, and when ISD saw it, they actually brought her to court for not getting the permit. The Chelsea Court has suspended the proceedings while we brought it here, trying to do the right thing. But it's been paved for a while. At this point, it's not marked, it's not lined, but when we filed the petitions, sort of in between glasses here, explain. So this is the parking plan. This area along here was formerly dirt, and the rats were coming in under the fences. To this side is rent-a-center, which is kind of a, to be somewhat less than diplomatic, a dump of a lot. There's a stockade fence and a chain-link fence here. Curb cut is already there, no modification required. So again, cars are being taken off the street, not eliminating any on-street parking. Ash Street is not much more than, there's no parking at all?
There's no parking.
Oh, okay, I thought there was parking on one side, but...
Oh, no, there's no parking on either side.
It's basically an alleyway at this point.
It is.
And as we discussed at the ZBA meeting, so we have the six parking spaces, and they're just a little bit narrow. We had talked about putting in planters or railroad ties or something to keep the cars from parking in the setbacks. But it just seems like a good resolution to a bad situation at this point. And, you know, even though it was paved prematurely, it has solved the rat problem.
And what about snow removal?
Snow removal? Elaine, I think you, do you want to come up here and point it out? I think you had said there's really enough room to push the snow off to the side.
That side, yeah.
To the Ash Street side?
Yeah, like along that fence.
Okay.
And also possibly in here, depending on what setup is a barrier. If it's railroad ties, you should be able to dump snow there. If it's higher planters, then that might be difficult.
So did you pave the entire space, or just the edges? I don't quite understand that.
Well, part of it we repaved, because it was, like, that first lot next to the house, and half of the second lot were paved. But it was coming up, so I said, I might as well do the whole thing. So we had the whole yard, because the rats were coming, and, you know, I asked the paver, and he said, unless you're opening the driveway, you don't need a permit. And I thought, that sounds reasonable.
Yeah, so I think that one of the only concerns is that if you had come beforehand, we might have had questions about drainage, and how it could be kind of like an eco-friendly paving system, so that it wouldn't just bounce water back up. So that would be my, kind of my only reservation, because there are permeable paving systems that are better for the environment in Chelsea, that is really suffering from having too much paved surface in this city, you know? But that would be my only reservation about it, and I don't know what people think about that.
Yeah, I mean, if, if an application had come before us to pave, to fully pave the space, I know that would have been one of my concerns, but it's been paved. At this point, you know, I don't, I mean, I would not ask her to tear it all up, to put down permeable surface, to come back into compliance, and, you know, to get out of court.
Can you share any more details about the court situation, so that the city took you to court?
Oh, so because I didn't pull a permit, someone from the city came and put a stop-work order. So then I got fined, and I sent, I sent the money in. I thought that that's why I was paying the fine. And then I got another one. So I was told that I could go to court and see, try to take care of it. But within, like, six days, I got another ticket. So within six days, I got a ticket for $150 and one for $300.
And you had already stopped work?
It was already done. It was done on Friday, and the city came back on Tuesday.
Wow.
I had actually checked with the court. There was a series of magistrate's hearings, and once Elaine filed the petitions here, and the city saw that, and ISD saw that she was well-intentioned, they suspended the hearing. So once this is done, they'll just dismiss the case. I checked the docket, and there's no further action to be taken.
I do, I, I don't know that I've ever heard of a situation, I mean, I've lived in Chelsea for 22 years, and have, I don't think I've ever heard of anyone being taken to court over something like this.
I think that was what I said when you first came into my office.
Well, I think, yeah.
I can say that other, in other cases where zoning has been violated, yes, they haven't taken to court. Where there was something like this, I don't know, but they, it is an option for enforcement.
Yeah. The other thing is, not that everybody is doing it, should be used as an excuse, but there are some pictures in the file also of the neighbors, and table and chairs set up in their parking areas for parties. I mean, it's basically what the solution was, and your comment about using pervious paving materials is well-taken, but, as we said, it's a little bit late to do that now, unfortunately. But, you know, Elaine will put in the planter that's already there, she'll refurbish that, right? And if there are any other places that she can fit planters and just brighten up the area a little bit, she will. But at the very least, as I said, railroad ties is a barrier to people parking up against the fence or in the setbacks.
Strange.
Absolutely.
So, I guess, sorry, but which side of the property, I guess, does it feel to meet the requirements? Is it by the, like, the planter section that's right there?
Well, what happened was, the houses, these are three 1,450-square-foot lots, if I'm doing the math correctly, it's 4,350 square feet.
Yeah.
This was always the side yard, so now what's happened, part of the problem is that by making this parking, it's taken away open space also. So we're trying to balance everything, maintain some open space for what it is, although it may not qualify under the ordinance, but also utilize the area instead of just having a big blacktop area, at least use it for parking for the tenants.
And beforehand, it was just dirt?
Well, most of it, most of it was paved. So there was parking, because there's no parking on the street. So there was parking on the whole first one next to the house. That lot was all, always paved. And then half of the other one was. There was just enough for my mother to do her gardening along, like, the L shape from the back, the side to the front. That was where the garden was.
Any other questions, comments, motions?
I don't see the department's recommendation. Oh, okay. Yeah. Did you have any comments, remarks?
Well, my comment is in the, my comments were in the report. Basically, the question I had was, which I asked at the ZBA meeting, is how do you make sure that you prevent the parking in the areas where they're not supposed to be parking, within the 10-foot frontage and in the 5-foot side yard? And the council had suggested planters or railroad ties. You'll see in the potential conditions I gave you, one of them was curbing to prevent that, and railroad ties could be used as curbing.
Yeah, there was also a question at the ZBA meeting about headlights from the cars shining across the street, and I believe you said there's nothing across the street, so it's really a non-issue also.
Plus, if it's a little fence.
I will make a motion to approve with the standard conditions, as well as the other conditions outlined by John, to have the curbing to identify the areas where parking isn't permitted. And there's also the condition here, John, about resident stickers?
Well, the relief is parking, and according to the zoning ordinance, if there's any parking relief, tenants aren't able to, are ineligible to receive on-street parking permits. I don't know how that works, one of the existing instructions. I'll have to look into that and wordsmith it in such a way that it addresses that issue.
My question was, you know, if there are existing tenants right now who have resident parking permits, I would think that they would be allowed to continue? It's if new tenants move in, were to move in, they would be ineligible?
I will check with the city clerk's office on that.
Well, the other, the other thing I would bring up, the other point I would bring up, is that there are a sufficient number of spaces for the building. The building requires six spaces, so we're really only requesting, well, I'll call it minimal dimensional relief for the spaces. So that, I believe, should obviate the ban on off-street parking permits.
The way the ordinance is worded is, any parking relief triggers the prohibition on getting resident stickers.
But then, you know, given these additional conditions, I make a motion to approve the application.
Everything checks out. I'll second it.
May I be seconded? Excuse me. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So it'll be June 13th for ZBA?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, obviously, the other petition is denied here. How do you want to address the other cases? Do you want, you could go on to the other business, and presuming that they show up, they probably won't at this time, then you can make a decision then. But the question is, do you want to continue them to the next meeting, or do you want to forego a review of them? It's up, it's up to the board.
Well, it's looking like we have a pretty packed agenda in June with six cases, so can we push them out to, like, July or August? Because we should...
You have at least seven cases in the, in the June agenda.
Want to...
So could we continue those, these two cases to July?
Well, that's up to the zoning board, too, because technically you have 30 days to respond to them. I don't know if they'd extend it all the way to July. They may act on it if you go past June. I don't know.
Okay. Well, I, I kind of have a different view. I don't, I feel like it's a little, they have plenty of notice and all this stuff. It's a little considerate not to at least inform us for the day of why they, why they can't show up. I mean, if, God forbid, there's a family emergency, I would understand, but not, it's like a no-call, no-show. So my attitude is, I don't want to give, I don't, I, I don't think they deserve the courtesy of extending it to another meeting, especially since we have such a packed agenda next month. But that's, you know, that's just me. I think they should reapply.
So if we, if we don't continue, then what happens?
Then the zoning board will vote, will take action on it at the June meeting.
Okay.
I mean, I can understand Mimi's feeling is, they were told at the last meeting to be here at this time and make the presentation to you, and not showing up should not be, relieve them from that.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah, so if this is going to go to zoning anyway, can we ask zoning to consider to put a condition that the driveway is permeable? Because I think that's the only thing I care about, is that appropriate, even if they can't talk to us here?
Yes.
Or we could vote to not recommend all of them?
Yeah, they, technically, they don't have to be here in order for you to act on it. I think it's appropriate that they be here, because they, there's questions that I can't answer, that only they can answer. So, but it's a tie-up to board, whether you continue it to the next month or not, so...
It's the pleasure of the board.
Well, I would, I mean, I, we have a very full agenda for next month, and I think adding two more, simply because, as Mimi pointed out, they could not do us the courtesy of letting us know ahead of time that they couldn't be here. I don't, I agree, you know, I would vote against continuing. And, you know, if we can vote, or, you know, like, we, given that they were not here to make a presentation, to answer questions, we cannot recommend approval, because we don't have the information to do so. So I guess I would, I'm saying is, you know, I would vote to not approve.
Okay. Want to make a motion to that?
Yeah, I, I will make a motion that we vote to not approve cases 2023-06 and 2023-08.
Second?
Oh, I'll second it.
May I be seconded? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Elaine, this one.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, we have the election of a representative to the Community Preservation Committee.
Yes.
Mimi is currently our representative.
And her term expires June 30th.
Oh, right. She is out of office on June 30th. Now, can she be re-elected?
Yes.
Yeah. Considering, I, I like it, I don't mind doing it, and considering that, although the board has been gutted, I think my institutional knowledge would be immensely helpful to have, because it's going to be all new members.
That's a part of it.
Mimi, can you speak into the microphone, because they can't hear you? Oh, yeah, I, I'd like to do it again for another, you know, it's just that the board is, has a huge turnover, and I think it's going to be a little challenging for the next board after, I have a meeting tomorrow, then the board all changes end of June.
Can I make a motion to nominate Mimi?
I will second that nomination.
All in favor, or are there any further nominations, I should say?
I'll third it.
Hearing none. All in favor of Ms. Ragintori?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so, discussion of upcoming meeting schedules. You saw on the material I gave you, next month's agenda has seven cases on it. And although I don't have a full July agenda yet, you already have four cases on a July agenda. The deadline for getting on the agenda is not until the Friday of the second week of June, so there's still time for more cases to come, and I'm aware of another four cases that are trying for that date. So there's, you may have up to eight cases in your July as well. The reason I'm asking for this is because the Soldiers' Home is, has told us that they have, well, actually, I told us, they've already submitted their plans to the zoning enforcement officer for his review, which means they'll, he'll get, they'll get their letter of denial, and it'll come to my office to set up the meetings for Planning Board and Zoning Board. It is a large redevelopment of the entire Soldiers' Home, over eight acres. It's in the R1 district. The only way that they can come in on that is under the planned development section of the zoning, which allows for all relief through a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals after a major site plan review by the Planning Board, and after a recommendation from my office. I'm assuming that that case by itself will be a couple hours long. So I'm recommending that you hold your regular meeting in July, and you hold a separate meeting on, a special meeting on a separate date, just to hear the Soldiers' Home case.
In July.
In July. But in addition to that, the petitioner would like to make an informal informational meeting to you next month. Not just you, but also the Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm going to be asking them the same question at their June 13th meeting. So I'm looking for some dates from you in, like, the second or third week of June, and in the third week of July.
Why would the, why, why does there need to be an informational session in addition to the Planning Board meeting?
The information session is a chance to get, to talk to you a little bit more informally. They can present the information in advance, it gives you extra time to think about it. You're not going to make any decisions based on the informal, based on your formal presentation, but at least it gives you some chance to absorb some of the information, some of the background information particularly, you know, this estate around the state is sponsoring this, what are, what's their goals for, and that type of stuff.
Is that first session going to be recorded?
If it's in here, it will be recorded, yes.
Okay.
So we're looking at, for the, the informational meeting, the weeks of June 5th or 12th?
Not the 5th, because I'm out that week.
Okay, so the 12th?
Or the, or the week after.
Okay.
And it's going to fall on a Tuesday?
Well, it can't be June 20th, only because I have a Conservation Commission meeting that, that night.
All right.
But can, can it be on a Wednesday?
It could be on any night.
Oh, it can be any night, okay, cool. Don't have a lot going on in June.
Yeah, Monday, the 19th.
Monday, the 19th is a holiday.
Yeah.
20th, I have a Conservation Commission meeting.
Wednesday, the 20th.
So you could do the 21st or the 22nd.
I can do the 21st, yeah, that works.
I can do, I can do Wednesday, the 21st.
Yeah, that works.
Wednesday, 21st, for an informational meeting? So 6:21, it'll be 6:00 AM here for informational meeting.
6:00 PM.
It's not 6:00 AM.
So I'm sorry, 6:00 PM. I'm up at 5:30. I'm usually here by 6 o'clock.
I do, but I don't think you can get in.
Okay.
And then you said there would need to be a separate Planning Board meeting in July?
In July.
To, for them to make their formal presentation.
Right, right.
Okay? And our meeting is the 25th?
No, can't do it the week of the 5th.
You could do it either that week or the week before.
Do everything except July 22nd or 23rd?
Well, I can't do the week of the 4th. It's the busiest week of the year, so I can't do anything that...
I mean, it could be the same week as your, as your Planning Board meeting, if you want to come in two nights that week. It's entirely up to you. I can make myself available any end of those nights. The only one I can't do again is July 18th, again, because I have a con... The only one I can't do again is July eighteenth, again, because I have a Conservation Commission meeting that night. Conservation Commission meets the third Wednesday, uh, third Thursday of the month.
I can do the, I, I couldn't...
Do you have any?
I could do the nineteenth.
Okay.
Nineteenth is a Wednesday.
Wednesday, July nineteenth.
Also at six PM, maybe in this room. These windows are scheduled to be replaced. So I may, you may, may not meet in this room, if not here, probably the senior center.
So a few of the Planning Board isn't here. Can we coordinate, can we communicate with that group in a quorum? Or is that not allowed?
Well, the informational meeting does not have to be a quorum.
Okay.
Because it's just informational.
But it will be subject to open meeting laws.
It will be subject to open meeting, yes.
And then whether or not it's recorded is just, that's just the desire of city council. It doesn't mean that open meeting law says that it has to be recorded.
Okay.
Right, and it also means I need to confer with the cable TV to see if he's available those days.
You know, the informational meeting and the separate Planning Board meetings for Soldiers' Home will have to be publicized.
Yeah, yes, yes, they will, they'll, they'll have to be advertised.
Yep.
Posted on the city's website and on the bulletin board. Uh, no, the informational meeting does not have to go in the paper, the formal one does.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Are we ready for that?
Up to chairman.
I just, we don't have to, we have no other decisions to make.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
So Sarah made a motion to adjourn.
Sorry, I didn't hear it.
I'll second the motion.
Second, may I be seconded? Yes? All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
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 Thank you.